I call this meeting to order. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has given adequate notice of this meeting by having published the date, time, and place of this meeting in the Home News Tribune and has posted notice of this meeting at the middle school, 330 Wayne Street, Highland Park, New Jersey. Lynda, could we have a roll call, please? Ms. Aversa?
Here.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Here.
Ms. Bull?
Here.
Mr. Dietz? Ms. Hughes?
Here.
Ms. Poynter Titus? Mr. Ross?
Here.
Ms. Sherber?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with whose majesty is the sole.
Could we have a motion to approve the minutes of July 29th, regular public and executive sessions, and of August 12th, the executive session?
Some move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? That was when we were just... You were not present.
To make the change?
No, 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 no. We were recollecting what August 12th, executive session.
It makes a people crisis about working.
Could we have a roll call, please? Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Abstain.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes, to the 29th, abstain from 12th, please.
Lynda, were there any communications? No. There was one that I think I directed to Ms. Lewis.
That was a sales person.
Yeah, okay. Karen, could we have the superintendent's report?
Well, we had no HIBs. Which is a good thing. All the programs are finished. The extended school year and the Title I program ended two weeks ago, and last week, the summer camp program for the borough finished. So, we are in the process of cleaning the middle school now that everyone is gone, so that is being taken care of. Just a couple of changes. One of the board members had brought to my attention that the SAT program was on the same day as homecoming, so we did change that to the 19th of October. You have a new calendar in your packet to accommodate those children who won't have to pick between festivities and the SAT program.
Which one's which?
Which one will be which date?
The homecoming is now October 19.
SATs are the...
We have new teacher orientation next week, on the 28th and 29th, here in the middle school. The new teachers will be doing some fun things like Right to Know, Power School, Honeywell, Instant Alert. We'll be reviewing curriculum, Study Island, Reading Eggs, discussing benchmarking, reviewing how to sign up for Source for Teachers. And we have one of our teachers coming in to work with them on the TeachScape Danielson model, so they're familiar with that evaluation system. Then, on September 3rd and 4th, we have our Welcome Back, where we'll be discussing bloodborne pathogens and diphis and all those other fun things during the two days. We'll also have review of what we have so far, as far as test scores are concerned, going over the benchmarking and common assessment, and then begin our work on the student growth objectives that have to be completed by November 15th. So, the teachers have received their letter. They are aware they had to have that by the 15th, so everything went out, everything is done. And some of them have come in and picked up their book. We're reading Pathways to the Common Core, so they have picked that up as well. And I think Mary Curran was supposed to be here tonight to discuss the Global Citizen. She had to cancel, so she will be here at the September 9th meeting. Okay? That's it. Thank you.
Do we have training scheduled for principal evaluation system? For training with that?
Principals all went out to be trained through the Strong model, so we will be reviewing that. So, I believe there'll be additional dates set up through Strong themselves, so as soon as I have those, I'll pass them on.
For the Global Citizens, if you or Ann is interested in talking to the Rutgers Prep Program Director, I've had brief conversations with them. I'd be happy to set that conversation up for you guys. I think she had good information on how they did it for the social aspect of...
Right. I think the committee, I know Catherine brought up a question about, you know, the points and the seniors and the juniors, and Mary is working with the committee once we get back, so we will be doing that, so...
Just let me know.
Okay, I'll let you know.
So, there were actually two different things. There was the, you know, Mary has been working with the teachers on the Global Citizen Certificate program.
Which is different from the other one.
Different than...
Okay.
Two different things that we're hoping will dovetail, so that, you know, for example, students can serve as mentors for international students and get points that way.
Yeah.
And now that pretty much we have every position filled except one, Lynda can let us know how we're doing as far as that other funding that you were looking for, for that program.
Yeah.
Give her a couple of weeks. A week or two, at least.
Thank you, Karen. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes...
There's an item on the agenda about a calendar change? Oh, is that the date you were talking about?
Yeah, we gave everybody a new October.
Okay.
The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and is reserved this time for your comments. Is there anybody who would like to comment? Okay. Dan, right? Okay. Dan, could we have the curriculum committee report, please?
Sure. Curriculum Committee did not meet tonight.
Wow.
Yes, we did.
Did we?
We just didn't have anything to talk about.
We met. We had no business.
The curriculum committee morphed into the personnel committee.
Right.
So, I'd like to move items 2 through 10 on the agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please? Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Adam, could we have the Finance and Facilities Committee report, please?
Yes. The Finance and Facilities Committee met tonight, and we discussed a few agenda items that I wanted to draw your attention to. Item 12 is the approval of the Architectural Services for the ROD grants window replacement that we talked about at the last meeting. Items 17 and 18 are ROD grant applications for more ROD grant applications. And items 22 on the addendum, I want to draw your attention to. Yes, that we're accepting a $50,000 donation for the auditorium project. There is $25,000 is coming directly from the HPEF, and 25, we believe, is from the seat donations that people are giving, and so we wanted to personally thank the HPEF and Mickey Landis and the whole auditorium project for that donation. Which brings me to the report on the auditorium project. We are expecting final completion by right around the first day of school, and we're working on figuring out a grand opening to invite the community and how to present it, which should happen relatively soon as well. Another update on projects that are going on over the summer are the Bartle School Auditorium Air Conditioning Project. We, as we talked about last week, last meeting, there was some asbestos, very, very little asbestos issue. That has been taken care of. And the auditorium, and the auditorium project and the HVAC portion of it is due to be completed probably right, I will say by the end of September, but it could be earlier. I don't want to say earlier. And I want to also report out on the final operating statement from our Food Services Program. We made $42,000 this year, and that fully paid for the equipment, the new equipment that we bought already, and the, as well as the repairs to the facility. So, we netted about $13,000 for the year. And with that, I believe that is... Oh, and just one other thing. Due to enrollment, we are purchasing more furniture, and we're doing that through the Ed Services Consortium, which actually had the best price for that. So, with that, I would like to move items 3 through 22 on the addendum. Sorry, 2 through 22 on the addendum.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
One. Adam, did you say we're going to tour the school?
Oh, yes. I was going to bring that up. Where the, as my board members know, the board normally participates in a district-wide building tour before the school year. We're actually going to be doing it at 5:30, starting at Irving School. I know that's a hard time for everybody to get there, but we just get there as soon as you can. We're going to be going from Irving School to Bartle School to this facility.
It's on the 9th.
It will be on the, it will be...
What time?
At 5:30, we'll be starting at Irving School, and we'll be touring the facility, seeing what has been going on over the summer and the cleaning and how it got ready for, I guess, school. So, that will be on your board links for next week, but 5:30 at Irving School is the start.
Okay, thanks. Anything else?
Yeah, I was wondering for item 13, if Karen, if you could talk about TeachScape a little bit, and the training that's been purchased for the teachers, and sort of just give an overview of the program and, you know, sort of what everybody has in store this year in this regard.
Well, last year, we started with TeachScape using the Danielson model, and they have updated the software to include the formula for teacher evaluation. So, we did have to supply them with a spreadsheet of information on the number of years teachers were teaching, whether they were in a tested or non-tested area, and they've added some other features to the program. So, when the teachers get back, it's really not that much different for them. It's the calculations that are being done at the end that will help to, because that information will be uploaded to the state, because we had to provide the SMIDS. However, the state database was down, so we were unable to get the SMIDS, so we have to send them at the end of the week. We're not the only one. It seems as though it was just bad timing overall. So, everything is, you know, all the information is fed in to the system, and so we're ready to begin the year.
And you have, as part of this program, there is pretty extensive professional development available for teachers.
Yeah. It provides, if a teacher has either an ineffective or developing in a particular area of Danielson, they can refer to the, or you could recommend that they review the videos, so they are able to hone in and see best practice. So, we dabbled in that last year, but it's much more refined this year, because now TeachScape has a better indication of what the state is requiring. So, they've updated a bit. So, I'm not foreseeing any problems with the teachers' end. I think at the end of the year, with the collection of the data and being submitted, I assume with the, the state will call it the way they do the end-of-year data for us. I don't know how they're going to, right now, include the tested areas, because we give the tests so late. I know they changed the calendar, but we're waiting for a final word on that from the state.
Adam, can you give more detail on number 18?
Yeah, that's the technology infrastructure. It's a Level 2 ROD grant, which the windows replacements are a Level 1 ROD grant, and the state will be funding Level 1s first, and if there is enough money, they will fund Level 2. We're, I guess, somewhat optimistic that it will get funded, but it's mostly the guts of tech, for the technology in buildings. Lynda, could you give me more of that?
Do you want specifics?
On what it is?
That sounds great.
Okay.
And it's great, because they'll pay 40% of the project.
It's all your backbone stuff. It doesn't fund actual, like, computers for the students, but in...
Switches, servers.
Yeah, switches, servers, routers, and all that.
Stuff that we badly need that's very expensive.
Any other questions? Could we have the roll call, please? Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Ms. Poynter Titus? I'm sorry. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Claire, could we have the Personnel Committee report?
Yes. Karen and I met tonight. I was half an hour early, because I read the agenda wrong. We coincided with the Curriculum Committee people and had sort of a joint meeting. The items that I would draw your attention to is some of the teaching positions that have been filled. So, item 3 is for a 4th grade teacher at Bartle. Item 4 is a 2nd grade teacher at Bartle. Item 5 is for a 60% Spanish teacher at Bartle. Item 6 is for a science teacher at the high school. And number 8 is additional summer employment hours for the current high school counselors. We are working on hiring a, what's it called, a lead, right? A lead counselor. And with that... Oh. There's an addendum, which is we are appointing our new superintendent tonight. We're happy about that. Also, appointing a assistant principal for the middle school and high school, and also an after-school site manager for the Bartle After School Program. And with that, I would like to move items 2 through 15.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or discussion?
Does item 15 need to have a salary?
Actually, it's one salary, and it's divided. There are three people who do that job, so it's 31% of the...
Statement.
No, it's not.
Because it went in the Curriculum Committee, number 8, Barbara Shimon has 56%.
Right, and she gets...
And there's a salary there.
A part of it, right. It's, I can get you the exact numbers. Debbie Pacora and Barb Shimon split it 56, 44, and Debbie Pacora doesn't want to give all the time, so we did interview, because we had some people apply for it in-house, and Lynda Moran has been covering, so that's why, sir, I could get you the exact... It's not a change, it's not an increase, it's the same as last year, it's just divided differently, so I can get you that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Could we have the roll call, please?
Oh.
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ann, could we have the Policy Committee report, please?
Policy Committee did not meet tonight, and I have no items to move.
Thank you. Okay, for the President's Report.
Unaccustomed as I am to...
You should take the presidential privilege.
We have completed the superintendent search process. 28 people applied, and we interviewed nine, with three returning for a second interview. We are pleased to welcome Mr. Tim Capone as Superintendent of Highland Park Schools. Mr. Capone has had outstanding success as a turnaround leader of schools in districts serving economically disadvantaged and minority populations, and as an Executive Director of Regional Achievement with the New Jersey Department of Education, overseeing a team working in 41 schools. We know he can help us deal with the challenges that all schools are facing. Development of curriculum that aligns with common course standards, common assessments, and teacher evaluations, his experience will serve us well. But I believe that all board members support the choice of Mr. Capone, not just because of these talents that he has, but because of the way he articulated a vision of every student reaching his or her potential. He expressed this vision with dedication and conviction and enthusiasm. He is a collaborator who will bring everyone along for the ride. The people who grew up in this town and now have children in the school say the schools were different, that is to say, better, back then. I don't think this is just the usual nostalgia for one's youth. Others say they moved here for the schools, but they say this with, just a little wistfully. Our schools are very good, but we want them to be great. We want the teachers, the staff, the administrators, and most of all, the students to be excited to be here every day. Mr. Capone will work with all of these, as well as with the parents and with the board, to make this vision a reality. We are very much looking forward to working with him. Mr. Capone?
I am very excited to be here. There's a lot of great things that have happened in this district, and in talking with the board members, there's also a lot of potential things that we can do to make sure that we better serve students. And I truly believe in individualizing educational opportunities for students. And it is a collaborative effort. It takes all of our teachers in our community and everyone, really, to make sure that every opportunity is available to students. So, I look forward to meeting everyone and to asking a lot of questions and listening to, you know, all the different points of view, to make sure that we are making sure that those opportunities are a reality for all the children. So, I am, like I said, very excited to be here. You know, there's a lot of change that's happening in education right now, and you could go through the list of initiatives, the things that are happening, and requirements from the state. And I truly believe that the superintendent is a service position, a service to the students first and foremost, service to making sure that we're ensuring that all staff are, you know, empowered to do the things that they need to do, that parents are supported and listened to as far as the needs of their children. And so, you know, again, I very much look forward to, you know, being able to sit down and be able to have those individual conversations and really build a strategic plan that's going to serve all students' needs. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Capone's first stay in the district will be August 26th, and there will be a meet and greet that evening at the middle school cafeteria at 7 o'clock. And so, all are invited, and the notice will go out through paperless and any other way we can get it out. It's sort of hard during the summer, but we will do it. Does anybody have any old business?
One quick thing. I'm not going to say much on it, just, we made a lot of money in food services this year. At some point, we got to go back and look at what we're serving the kids.
That is part, isn't that part of the healthy...
The profit.
No, 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 the healthy...
No, middle school cafeteria, Bartle School. Did you say...
I thought I said middle.
You did.
Which...
No, you said middle.
Middle school.
You said middle.
You didn't have to. You said middle school.
Yeah.
Here.
Yes.
Here, we're having it here.
I thought so.
And yes, you are correct. The Healthy Schools Alliance will work with us.
Will be looking at the menus and...
Yep. They will be looking at that.
And so that...
We're going to need board support, but yeah, they'll be, they'll actually have the, they'll have a lot of the ideas and see where, what they've done in the past in other districts. So, but it's great that we made the money.
We're going to give them two scoops of ice cream.
No chocolate milk, though.
Oh, let's not go there.
You know how I feel, Daniel.
I wanted to, even though I wasn't a huge fan of this, as this was Adam's discussion about the paperless board meetings, I feel like we left it in limbo.
We talked...
Did we talk about it last week? Okay.
And we actually came, we're not doing it, but we're doing a Gmail account that is dedicated just to the nine of us, that's going to be a shared doc that we can all access prior to the meeting.
Perfect.
Because we all, we all agreed with you, you know, that why waste the money? We can do it in-house.
Okay, great, thank you.
But we'll talk about, do we, are we set up for next meeting, I believe, was? No?
The end of September.
The end of September is when we're going to be doing it.
Any other old business?
Oh, I have old business, that's fine. I was just, what is going on with the owl?
I think we've just abandoned the Temple Owl and went back to the...
Right, we have to, but what are we going to use? Are we going to go back and use the owl?
To the one that was in the yearbook. That's where we left it with our...
Which, the current yearbook or like my yearbook?
No, the, I think it was the one that was on the older yearbook, the...
It's like the one, I'm just recommending the one that they strayed from years ago.
Yeah, right, the stretched-out wing.
No, the one that's on the scoreboard, on the football field, that's actually the owl that we've always, was the old traditional owl.
I have to look, I know the high school principal has a copy of the old one in the office, so I'll check to make sure it matches the one on the scoreboard.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other old business? Is there any new business? I just want to, we received this email from a citizen in regard to the Thanksgiving Day game between Highland Park and Matuchen that's scheduled for this year, and they wanted to have, well, they're saying that in the past, there was a pep rally held on the field, and they would like to be involved in organizing that. And they also would like to do some fundraising, and profits would go to scholarships for senior athletics. So, if we're going to do something like this, I think we need a board motion in order to give permission to do so. And Lynda, I don't know if there's any...
Yeah, I'm not familiar with this.
Can you just pass that to Lynda? If we're going to have citizens organize that and do fundraising, I think Lynda should somehow be involved, the business office aspect. I think it's a great idea, however, I want to make sure we're doing everything by the book.
Yeah, they're not using my...
Athletic boost trip on block?
Well, we run the concession stand.
So, that's different.
Right, that's different. This is, what this person's talking about is going, yeah.
And they want to have a bonfire, which we would have to get permission from the fire marshal.
Because they're going back when it's, I don't know if they do it when you were still in school, years ago.
They didn't do it when I was here.
See, they really can't do it on the field, because it's plastic.
The night before Thanksgiving, they always did the pep rally, and besides the school, almost like the entire community came, and they had a big bonfire, it was just a big pep rally. There was never any fundraising type of thing that occurred then, so...
But they really can't do a bonfire there, because the grass is fake.
Right.
So, it would probably melt.
Probably off gases.
Or ignite, so I think that maybe...
Right, it wouldn't be on the field.
It wouldn't be on the field, it might be for the game.
Right. I think they have to probably come in, and we probably would have to have them talk to the fire marshal and get permission for whatever it is they want to do, some kind of chimenea or something, perhaps, rather than...
I mean, I think it's a great idea to bring it back.
Well, so, yeah, so I move that we allow Ms. Nagleman to pursue a alumni-sponsored event the night before homecoming and the associated fundraising.
Thanksgiving game, not homecoming.
Right, then who will she meet with about the, I mean, I think the fundraising is great, too, but...
Well, she should meet with Lynda about the requirements for that.
Yeah, I would think there would be some insurance issues and stuff.
Right, so...
Before we make a motion, shouldn't we get more information?
I don't know if there's time.
I'm not sure that we're ready for a motion.
Well, I think you could tell them that they could move forward in getting, because I'm sure they're going to have to get a permit and everything, so. And Lynda maybe can contact them.
Right, we can say, at the end of the day, we have final say.
Pending, and we can say pending insurance and, you know, permit. Pending, and we can say pending insurance and, you know, permit approvals.
Well, they can, we're going to have another board meeting between then and, I agree that we should put a motion to let them pursue it.
Okay.
Investigate it.
And, but, you know, we're, at the end of the day, we're going to have final say anyway. If they come back to us and say it's going to cost us an extra $5,000 on...
Right, but at least they can get the wheels in motion.
Yeah, exactly.
Can't we just instruct Linda to give Ms. Naglman a call? Why do we have to make a motion for someone to have a conversation?
Well, actually, I think I'm going to need to have conversations with our attorney and our insurance company with regard to all of those various issues that could be involved in...
Yeah, I think it does not have a motion.
I mean, this is not a school-sponsored group.
It just shows board support.
Linda to explore this.
Yeah, it shows board support, that we support this idea.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do a more of a philosophical motion, just that you agree with the concept. Not substantial, you know, tangible thing.
I think Ann's motion was fine, that we're supporting, that we support the idea of...
Of investigating.
Right, investigate.
Including, you know, figuring out whatever kinds of insurance and permits they'll need. And that we're also supportive of their fundraising efforts, that they want to fundraise around them philosophically. Philosophically, that's important.
They call up a bonfire, yeah, second. They call up a bonfire place, and they ask, do you have support of your school? They can say yes now.
Okay.
Because someone's going to have to run chimney.
I think they're borrowing parents.
As long as they don't burn down my house, which is right behind the school, I'm okay.
Could we have a roll call, though? Ms. Versa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Is there any other new business? The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and is reserved this time for your comments. Is there anybody who would like to speak? Okay, we need a motion to go into executive session at 7:00 PM on September 9th at the middle school to discuss personnel litigation and negotiations.
So moved.
Do we need to do something special for the building tours since this...
Depends on how many people are coming.
I think we have to assume it'll be more than a quorum, so you have to, I think, probably have to move.
I'm not sure what you call that.
It's not a closed session, though.
Not really, no, it's not executive session.
I don't know what we normally do.
So technically, the public could follow us around.
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't we do this motion then before doing a new motion for, I guess you could call it a public field trip? Yeah, public session to tour the buildings.
Okay.
Okay, so could we have a motion to go into executive session at 7:00 PM on September 9th at the middle school to discuss personnel litigation and negotiations?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could we have a motion to go on a building tour at 5:30 PM on September 9th, 2013, starting at Irving School?
It's moved.
I said...
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could I have a motion to adjourn?
It's moved.
All in, oh, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.